Thank you. I'll call to order the Committee of the Whole, Parks and Environmental Sustainability. In attendance are council members Stewart, Forsyth, Fields, Khan, and Kritzer. We have three items on our agenda today. This is Tuesday, July 25, 2023, at 4:30 PM in the council chambers. Our first item is approval of the consultant agreement with Herrera Environmental Consultants in the amount of $122,007.18 for the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability and Vegetation Management Plan. And we have, we have our Parks Director, Lorraine Hamilton, here to introduce.
Yes, the item before us today is what Councilmember Carson just read, and actually, Deputy Director Dave Tuchek is here with me, and he will discuss this item.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Dave Tuchek, Deputy Director. We're here today seeking your approval of a consultant agreement with Herrera Environmental Consultants, Inc., for the Climate Resiliency and Sustainability and Vegetation Management Plan in the amount of $122,718. The building upon previous city planning efforts related to environmental sustainability, the consultant will work with the city to develop a plan that includes actionable items and strategies resulting in a more climate resilient and sustainable natural environment. Some of the examples of the strategies will include tree expansion on public lands, and not only just basically noting that in their plan, but actually identifying and mapping these areas. Same with rewilding city-owned properties, replacing formal lawn areas with naturalized meadows, pollinator habitat areas, modification of maintenance practices, adjusting tree, plant genus, and species that will be more climate adaptable than any emerging trends that they're experts in, in their line of work. So the project timeline, the goal is to initiate the project in August, so next month, and the final Climate Resiliency and Sustainability Plan will be completed by this coming February in 2024. Following the completion of the plan, we will implement actionable items in 2024, and then if there are any additional funding that is necessary to implement portions of the plan, a budget request will be submitted during the 2025-2026 budget process. We're going to be seeking final council approval of this consultant agreement next Wednesday on August 2. And with that, are there any questions?
Are there any questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Really excited to have the results of this and have that list that we can then take and do our part to fund over the next few years. I wondered if you could speak a little bit to how this project will utilize the existing climate vulnerability assessment. I noticed in the packet of the folks who are going to be on our team, they have a lot of experience writing these climate vulnerability assessments, and we already have one, so we're, my understanding is this is a step beyond. So could you just speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so we're actually going to be, part of their project is they're going to be taking a look at several plans that relate to this topic. So the ESAP, our 20-year forestry plan, our climate action plan, and really what we're focused on now is taking action, right? So we've identified things like, we have a lot of mowed parkland, fine turf areas in our park system, and then what we want to do is actually go in and convert those to either, you know, meadow grass areas, pollinator gardens, like I said, those types of things. Also canopy expansion, we're taking a look at our maintenance practices. So things like, right now, in the fall, we haul a lot of leaf debris out of the parks. What we want to do is we actually want to incorporate that back into either the planting areas or around the base of tree areas. And there's some really good examples of where they will, rather than having a tree circle, they will use the leaf mulch and create kind of a leaf island, if you will, and it's really great because the soil is conditioned better, you use less water, and the trees are healthier. So really, the point is taking a lot of the lists of items related to this topic and some of the plans, and actually making it happen on the ground.
Yeah, and I would add, a lot of the plans, so for example, the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan, the ESAP, it has all of these ideas. We want to expand tree canopy, we want to adapt our maintenance practices, and doesn't necessarily say, "And in Redmond, your current practice is this, therefore it could look like this." So this is our way of being able to do that, look at things like irrigation. I love the example of the leaf hauling that Dave is using. So our hope is, there will be items that we may have some sort of an ask for that may turn into a CIP project. I think of a lot of our rite of ways that are heavily landscaped, and could those become more climate resilient? I think so. And so the hope also is that as we assess some of our maintenance practices, that it will also impact those line items as we look at the next budget as well, since some of those items are going to need a budget enhancement, as is.
Councilmember Forsyth.
Well, that just led perfectly into my question. So thinking about budget, thinking about all of these improvements and changes that we want to make, are any of these items going to have carbon reduction numbers tied to them so that when we are looking at budget and trying to have the biggest impact, we can see what's actually going to have the biggest impact for our climate reduction numbers?
That is the hope. The hope is that there will be things that reduce carbon. We also, one of the things we want to be able to measure also, or look at more closely, that we haven't looked at as closely in our ESAP efforts, is carbon sequestration as well, and so those are things that we're also looking at, and Jenny will be a part of those conversations. So the answer is yes, that is the hope, but some of it will also just, yeah, come down to our ability to implement and work plans as well.
That's not necessarily part of the scope right now, is like that we're expecting to see those numbers come out of this work?
Numbers for?
The carbon reduction numbers.
No, not necessarily.
Dave?
No, we haven't identified that, but then also, part of this project is, we have identified some of the specific deliverables, but we're also going to be working directly with the consultants, so we have some room in there if we want to specify more of what we want to have as a deliverable.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be interesting for us to know, you know, if, you know, doing like the butterfly garden kind of thing, if, what the reduction would be, so that if we, it comes down to, do we do this, do we do that, in the budget, we know which one is going to have the greater impact. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields.
Green is on. Okay. So my questions are very similar, but maybe a little more specific for me. So I think, you know, I was involved with the very beginning of this assessment or opportunity four or five years ago, before we hired a sustainability manager. And my expectation, all of these past four years, is that we would, in fact, develop a set of metrics and a strategic plan tied to metrics and a time horizon of when we expect to achieve certain things. When I hear, Dave, when you describe what you're doing, it doesn't feel like we're starting the strategic plan over. We're doing more about specific or selected activities, but those should be tied to some kind of metrics in the work that we've done previously. So I'm going to push back a little bit and say, why are we not starting with those items that came from the, I'm going to call it a strategic plan, opportunity assessment or vulnerability assessment? But we had some very specific actions, and we had tied city council support to those things. So now I'm, when I'm, it's a bit vague for me when you describe what you're doing, and I feel a disconnect to the emergency declaration and the ESAP plan. So if you can, if you can show me that it's not disconnected and that there is a clear connection between those goals and those metrics, that would make me a lot more happy.
Yes, so I can answer that. Like I said earlier, so the consultants are going to review ESAP in particular, and some of the other plans that were developed. We'll be taking a look at the metrics. We also have a core team on this project. Jenny Liebeck is part of the core team, Amanda Balzer, Caroline Chapman, so people who have basically led some of these other plans. So all of this focus, working with the consultant, they're going to be tied in directly. So it's really, we see it, like I say, as an opportunity. A lot of the groundwork, as you described, has been done, and we have metrics and targets. Now we want to deliver. And we've been able to do some of that, but this is really focused, I mean, and that's our goal, and what you've got in our department and on our team is that we're very, I would say, energized about this topic, particularly now with, we see as each week goes by and what's going on across the United States in terms of the elevated temperature, and we're experiencing it, just look around, you know, our community. So we have the right people, and we want to take action on those plans. So that's the focus.
And if I may add, part of the goal also is to ensure that, you know, vegetation management happens in parks, but it also happens within public works, and so the goal of this also is to ensure that we're aligned as a whole city. And so it's, with things like tree canopy, there's tree canopy, things that are living in planning, and in parks, and in public works. And part of the goal of this is, and then Jenny Liebeck, of course, with sustainability, the goal is to make sure that we're all working towards the same functional plan. So yes, I hear your question, and I would say it's, this is allowing us to be actionable and targeted, to hit some of those metrics. Like Dave said, they'll be connected in, and it's also going to help some things make more sense as we operationalize forward and look to meet those goals and metrics. So for us, it's very much connected to that work, and not starting over or even disconnected, but really is meant to tie together.
And that's, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And that, I think that's really important. And one follow-up question, will the consultant be providing ideas about what they have seen in other locations that, as Councilmember Forsyth said, get a higher priority or more bang-for-the-buck kind of thing, more, more towards meeting our values and our goals?
Yes, that is, in a nutshell, the whole kind of goal of this work is to have that prioritization and to have, like, options of, you know, maybe maintenance things that we can shift and change, but one of the things we also asked them to add in was long-range projects as well, such as, you know, changing out rite of ways and things like that. So yes, that is the goal, is to have those items from the consultant.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right, Councilmember Kritzer.
Just to round us out, so we'll, I'm just joking. So it sounds to me from hearing the questions from my fellow councilmembers, like, we're moving from the strategic plans level to the implementation plans. One question that I have in terms of, as we move forward, just a thought, is that on some of the items you mentioned, like for example, changing our lawns, or the idea around using the leaves differently, that I think could be cool to add into the plan, is just the way that we message how we do this work with the public. You know, like if you see in the park, all of a sudden, the trees with these new types of rings of leaves around them, to know that this is part of our climate resiliency strategy, because I think we're doing all this work, we've set this vision, and now we're going to go implement these interesting things, where if you notice that the lawn in your favorite park is a little bit different, it could be cool to have that as part of this plan, is like, what's the community education element going to be?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and I love that you asked it. It actually reminds me of during the budget process, when we were talking about irrigation. I don't know if you remember, you asked the question.
I do.
Did we learn anything? And I said, yes, we learned that when we do things like stop watering lawns and don't explain the maybe environmental impacts, people have feelings about that. It's kind of the conversation that we had. I get really, Dave gets really excited about like the transition of the vegetation and stuff. I get really excited about this part, the education of our community part. I think it's actually a thing we don't always do really well, is explain to them how our operations are impacting. We've already hit a lot of goals for the ESAP within our integrated pest management, for example. It's been a huge thing that Dave's team has done, and they've really looked to incorporate different ways of managing, and we don't always tell that story super well. So I'm very excited. We are going to be, when this plan is done and we start to have some actionable items, creating storytelling and messaging around this. One thing that we are doing this year that will start to tie into this already is that the National Recreation and Parks Association does something every September called BioBlitz. We're calling it Parks for Pollinators, and it's an effort to do community education and also bring the community together around the benefit of pollinators within our parks, and why it's important for us to change our sustainability and change our vegetation management within our system. So we're actually doing that this year. It'll be in September, I believe, and our team is working on that, and it's our first year, so it's going to probably start a little bit small, but it's kind of the first step in that community education so that we can start to elevate that conversation within our community about how we manage our parks and how that impacts the environment around us. So yes, really excited about it. I think there's going to be some really great social media around it. I have, I think we have some fun ideas for signage in parks and things like that. So yeah, I'm really excited about that part. It'll be great.
Great, well, thank you. So this is scheduled for action in a week, week and a day, I should say. Are there any objections to this going on consent? Let me just check online. There are none. So we will, we will have this on consent on next Wednesday. Great, thank you very much.
And I think one of your stories should be Dave's point about the heating across the nation.
Definitely.
Sold me.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. So our second item is annexation of parcel 272605-9148 for the Redmond Central Connector Phase 3, and Carol Hilland, our planning director, is here, and a bevy of other folks.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Presiding Officer Carson, councilmembers. It's good to see you. Today, I'm joined by Odra Cardenas and Jeff Churchill, and Odra manages our annexation program and is going to, I'm going to turn the microphone over to her, and she's going to describe the annexation that is being proposed for a city-owned parcel that will help with the development of Redmond Central Connector 3.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. So we are bringing this item, this ordinance to
You'll need to, you'll need to speak closer. There you go.
So we're bringing this item to annex the parcel 272605-9145. The city owns this parcel and would pursue the annexation under the Annexation for Municipal Purposes process, which requires a majority vote from council to annex. By annexing this parcel, the City of Redmond will become the land use and permitting authority for the property, which will simplify the permitting process for their Redmond Central Connector Phase 3 project. This annexation will result in the entirety of the RCC being within city limits and under the city's jurisdiction, and we are requesting council's approval to add this to the August 2 consent agenda.
Great, thank you. Are there questions from council? If not, I have one. So I guess my question would be, why haven't we done this sooner?
Well, this parcel is a very small parcel that was actually acquired in 2010, but it's been overlooked because in the maps, it's under the, actually the line for City of Redmond, so you cannot really see it if you zoom out, but of course, nobody had any interest in this parcel until we started the Redmond Central Connector, so that's why it's moving forward now.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure people knew why, like, because this has been on our agenda since probably 2009 or something, the Central Connector.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Forsyth.
I'm very excited about this.
That's it.
Great. So are there any problems with putting this on consent for next week? Seeing none, we will do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and our last item for the day, item number three, is update of the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, and we have Lisa Figaroa coming to see us, and Chief Shepherd. There you go.
All right, well, good evening, council, and thank you for the pleasure of your time. I'm Fire Chief Adrian Shepherd. The Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan serves as a paramount policy blueprint detailing the essential framework for handling emergencies within the political subdivision. As defined by WAC 11830060, the plan meticulously delineates key components that must be incorporated into the city's emergency strategy. The components include clarifying the mission, purpose, and plan, outlining the organizational structure and respective responsibilities, and formulating the concept of operations encompassing the plan's execution and overarching functions to be performed. By adhering to this outline, the city can ensure a well-coordinated and effective response to emergent situations. The approval of the CEMP does not necessitate a vote by council. Instead, as per WAC 11830060, subsection 6, the plan is to be distributed through a letter bearing the signature of the current executive head, the mayor. This signifies that the plan's endorsement and dissemination lie within, apologies, lie within the purview of the executive authority, ensuring its implementation and adherence to the established guidelines. We come before you this evening to present this comprehensive plan. The policy document embodies our city's commitment to preparedness and resilience in the face of emergencies. Today's presentation will provide an overview of the CEMP's mission, purpose, organizational structure, and concepts of operation that underpin our effectiveness, and we're devoted to substantial efforts to ensure that the plan aligns with the city's unique needs for the community. And we welcome the opportunity to address any questions you may have before us. My compliment today is Emergency Manager Lisa Figaroa, and with that, I would ask that Lisa, bring us through the CEMP.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes, Lisa Figaroa, Emergency Manager, and the CEMP is very important, is a structural and foundational document on how we prepare for, respond to, and recover from emergencies. And this new, the update, it hadn't been updated since 2015, and since it is due every five years, it was obviously very, very outdated and needed quite a bit of work. So first was a review of the document and working directly with the State Department to make sure that we were in compliance with all of their regulations and any changes that had happened, which quite a few laws and requirements had been added in the last eight years. So it has been reviewed by the State of Washington. It meets all of their requirements, and I will talk about some of the changes that resulted from that. It does also comply with all the federal standards and allows us to have that consistency within the, all of the neighboring jurisdictions and the county, King County as well. So the plan itself, it presents the concept of operations on how the city will respond in accordance with the national response framework. So FEMA puts out a guidance for all the jurisdictions to follow on the elements that must be included in such a plan. It also details how we will accomplish multi-jurisdictional coordination, identifies roles and responsibilities, and emergency support functions within the city, details the structure of emergency coordinations and communications. It also covers the essential documentation, financial reporting, and resource management practices that we will, that will be used during a response. It also includes a planned maintenance of review annually and after any activation, as well as the major review of it before we present it to the state again in five years. And some of the changes since the last update, this new plan, it will be public-facing and posted on our site, so we've included many live links that will help the user find things like the King County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and the Redmond Annex that is on that, and other things such as information on fault lines or things like that. So if there is someone from the public who wants to take a deep dive into the emergency management program, this will be a resource to connect with a lot of those documentations and just current, current information. It will also have the links to relevant state legislation. All of the terminology has been changed to be consistent with the partners within the region, and it has a large emphasis on the whole of community, which means looking at everything through the viewpoint of making sure that everyone with access and functional needs will be able to access the same emergency care that anyone else will, that our plans, our sheltering, our alert and warning, all of those things will take any limitations that residents may have or visitors may have into consideration. So those are outlined more, and that was one of the major changes on the state level, that those requirements needed to be in this plan and outlined. And with that, that's a very, very brief overview, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Great, questions from council? Oops, I'm sorry, Mr. Fields.
Yeah, this is an interesting topic for me. So I picked up my granddaughter from the airport. They'd been in China for three years, and she said, "Do they have earthquakes here?" And I said, "Yeah." And she said, "They're big ones?" And I said, "Yeah, they can." She goes, "Oh, we're all going to die." And this topic was on my mind because I prepared for the meeting, and I remember asking this four or five years ago, same question, I'm going to ask again. We can know in government and in our jurisdictional government what we're going to do, but if we have not communicated well with the community, then those plans are not very effective. So, and I believe you when you say it meets all the requirements and we've coordinated well, but what, what are we going to do to actually keep, you know, we can't educate every single person out there, but we can hit a critical mass, I think. What is the plan to, for community outreach and let people know what our expectations are of them and what they should be expecting of us? I know it's gone from seven days you're on your own to 21 days you're on your own. So I think that part of the plan feels it needs some work.
Okay, I'm happy to talk about that because that is a major concern, that we want the public to, to understand what we're doing and to learn those preparedness tips on what you should do for that. And some of the things, we are starting up again, meeting with community, community groups, we've spoken at several HOAs, because people want this information. Working with King County to get more materials to hand out, we handed out so many pamphlets and answered many questions at Derby Days, so attending as many of those as we can and outreach. One of my goals is to work with more of the apartment complexes, because there are so many residents that are coming in here for three or six-month periods and are not aware of the hazards, and that isn't something that, we can necessarily reach those groups, but many of the complexes have a welcome packet that they give to residents. So coming up with something that we could give at those times, at least allowing them to understand what to do in an earthquake, how to sign up for Alert King County, and where to look for information locally.
And I appreciate that, and as I said, I don't think you can be perfect in this, but we should be comprehensive, so it sounds like it's on your minds, and I appreciate that. So thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember Forsyth, and then Stewart.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields kind of summed up nicely a lot of my thoughts, but just really honing in on that, it seems like it might have been a shift to seven days from 14 days of preparedness. Is that, is that accurate? I've been really excited to get this document the whole time I've been on council, so I really want to dive in further, but can you just address that one?
The more is, is better. Yes, they, they do talk about even up to 21 days with those, but any preparedness is better. I know they expanded because not long ago it was three days. I know they expanded because not long ago it was three days. And we realized that if we had something like Cascadia, that, you know, a huge earthquake, three days wouldn't be sufficient because that was previously what.
This was, was the city resources were for seven days? Was I reading that correctly? That the city would have resources for seven days? Community members should always have more?
That, that's for the community members. There would be no way for the, the city to have that capacity to.
Have those resources.
To have the, that much for the entire community. So the encouragement is that if each resident comes up with, with their own formula and has their own, own stash of things, because we would have no way of distributing that large of, of numbers as well. But if each household had the recommended gallon of water per person per day for 14 days at least, that that would, would help bridge them, bridge that gap.
So we just experienced a large, major event. We are coming through the other side of it. What have we learned that has been incorporated into this version from the pandemic?
Communication and collaboration. Going through that setup, the understanding of having to be consistent and to communicate the most current situation to everybody, especially in something that was changing so fast. So the importance of having multiple briefings and talking points to make sure everybody was on the same page has been something that has come out consistently. I was not in the area during that time, but it's, it's been consistent across the board. And for the action, after-action meetings within King County that I have been on since then, those have been the, the common topics.
Yeah, and I would add that what we found is that we didn't have current plans in place that were actionable. So by making sure that we do have these in place, making sure that we're exercising them regularly, make more than certain that we do understand our roles and responsibilities. I think that was probably one of the outcomes from what we went through with the pandemic.
And our reliance on community, how is that being folded into this? I know, Chief Shepherd, when you, when we interviewed you, that was one of my questions for you about making sure that our community volunteers were a big part of this plan. So can you talk about how that's worked into this plan?
Absolutely, I'll start and then I'll let Lisa finish. But I'm a huge advocate of the community being a part of our emergency response. I don't believe that we can get it done. Local government operates on the economy, so you can't have a 400-person staffed department. You need to have a minimally staffed department, but rely on our community members to step in in times of need. That means that we need to be proactive by making sure that we keep them informed, socializing something such as the CEMP with them, and really training them on emergency response. So holding true to my words with you that I said a couple of years ago, and I continue to believe that, I've seen it come true throughout my career. And I've emphasized it again and again with Lisa and the rest of the team in Emergency Management. So Lisa, I'll let you pick up on some of your actions.
Okay, yes, and echo the importance of having those, the community and the volunteers. And we are rebuilding our list of volunteers. They've been invited to fire department exercises, events. We're trying to engage the old volunteers as well as, as building a new base from cert activities or community events that we've been able to meet people. Met a lot of people at the past couple Derby Days and other events that people are excited to serve. And we're sending regular updates and are planning on having regular, now that we're building that base, having more consistent quarterly or biannual meetings with them to work together, not just inviting them to events, but helping to create those events going forward.
So more training exercises and those sorts of things? Is that, okay.
Yes, and those are ramping up now along the region. There haven't been as many opportunities just because all the departments are, are just opening those up and rebuilding after it. But yes.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'm still have a lot of reading to do, so I may reach out to you in the next week. I'm not sure I'll be prepared to vote on the second, but it's, it's a big document and a very important document, so I wanna make sure I do my due diligence.
I could just add one more thing to your question. We believe in our community volunteers as much as anyone else, if not more. And we're actually bringing them into the hiring process when we, when we bring on new people into the organizations. Because they have that understanding, we want them to actually be a part of it because we believe there's that synergy that they're going to have with this person once they get through and into the organization. We believe it's gonna yield a little bit more. So we wanna have them involved in everything we're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields. Oh, sorry, actually, Councilmember Stewart. She's been there from the beginning. Sorry about that.
Sorry, not sorry. Thank you so much for the conversation, everyone, really excited. And Lisa, Ms. Figaroa, I wanted to commend your attention to the vertical housing in our city. And, and there is more, that is where a lot of our renter population is concentrated, and there's more folks moving in and out. The welcome packet's an awesome opportunity. When I went through the CERT program, one thing I just kept thinking was, how in the heck can a family of, say, four, have a gallon of water per family member per day, per day? You know, if the whole thing is like 900 square feet, like, you know, you would need an entire bathroom dedicated to your emergency supplies. So the idea of continuing to build our emergency response capacity, knowing that we're gonna become a more vertical city, is just a topic I'm, I'm really, really fond of thinking about, and then especially thinking about our different neighborhoods and how we have urban centers quite far apart from one another. So, so I just really love that topic and wanted to, thank you for that, your attention to that. We talked about the new terminology in the plan, and Chief, you mentioned the exercising of the plan. I'd just like to learn a little bit more about how, what does that mean? What does that look like for, for Team Redmond to, to know this plan enough that we're not pulling it off the shelf and going, oh, yeah, which page are we on in the middle of an emergency?
Absolutely, you wanna take it?
I can take that one. Yes, so I am starting with the EOC, Emergency Operations Center. That's one of the, the changes we made for consistency. It previously was Coordination Center. But I'm meeting with the new staff. I have a new group of, of staff made up of staff from each department that would serve in the EOC. So my first step is I have five meetings scheduled through the end of the year to familiarize them with the plan and being in the EOC so that, that we have that strength. And then also going from there, want to familiarize the rest of staff to understand what we're doing, because, as you know, if anything happened, any employee could be pulled in to help with the response, especially when we look at something very large scale, that part of that, everyone could be an emergency volunteer. So that's starting with the basics of familiarizing and then doing tabletop exercises and more large-scale exercises to give everybody a feeling of what it would be like to, to go through some sort of scenario. Whether, we've done a lot with Cascadia Rising, but there's a lot of other scenarios that we're discussing that could be relevant. Also, working with the training that's coming in with the light rail, we're gonna be participating in a, a drill with them as well, tabletopd as well as full-scale. So giving people a variety of ways to be trained on what it means to, because there's a lot of terms in here that, going through what, incident management teams and all those things that might not, it's very dry. So having the opportunity to train and exercise and, and empower people to understand what those things mean is important.
And I would say in addition to clarifying with, with the public and our employees, one of the things that we need to do is work with each of you individually, sit down and make sure that we go through the document fully. And if we can individually share time, and I would ask that you give us at least two hours of your time to go through the document, so you can ask us all questions that are pertinent to you, so we can have that level of clarification and role responsibilities. I think that would be very important in times of emergency, in addition to all the other things that Emergency Manager Figaroa just mentioned.
Wonderful. I, I would be very much in favor of that. And even to the extent that it could be helpful, and it would have to be thoughtful, but to, if, if you were comfortable inviting us to tabletop exercises, to the extent that we are ambassadors for how well-prepared you all are and for us to see it, if that were ever appropriate, I will leave that to your discretion. But we do get the questions on it, and at Derby Days, it was one of those things that we were, we were following up about because we had lots of folks who were interested. Wonderful. My last question is about the approval of this, which Councilmember Forsyth brought up. I was unclear from the memo. Does Council need to approve this plan?
So procedurally, I believe that this is only to be informational. Again, I believe that the, the approval actually comes from the mayor's office, and that's per the WAC. So no, we're here to provide information, and if we weren't clear in our process, we apologize for that.
Oh, you mentioned that in your, in your opening remarks. So, so to be clear, we don't need to vote on this?
The memo states we're voting on it on August 2nd.
That's correct, yeah. And I, again, I apologize before you, I don't believe that is necessary. This is informational.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Critzer?
Just to follow up on the discussion around kind of practicing the plan or talking through the, the different pieces, I think having gone through an emergency together as, as a council, or many of us, when it first started, I think we really saw how this plan is used or some of the, the gaps in it. So I'm glad to hear on some of the ways that we learned. But I do think that it would be good if we could schedule a follow-up session, hopefully with the mayor as well, and then also with some of the people who would be in the Emergency Operations Center team. Just to be able to talk through, like, what does that communication look like? Because I think that was really the biggest challenge that I saw in terms of, like, what, because there's the council's roles and responsibilities, and we had many, many long sessions discussing that section of this plan in 2020. And, and saying, you know, both what's our roles and responsibilities, as well as how do we communicate with each other? And I think being able to play it out a little bit to say, in this scenario, what would it look like? And I think, and to really talk about beyond, as you mentioned, it, what it says in the text versus how we live it is a little bit different. And envisioning, you know, let's say we had another pandemic start, or let's say we had a emergency where you had a cutoff of telecommunications, but you had other types of things, right? Like, what's the, the different ways in which we would expect to be communicated with? I think would be a really useful conversation. And what, and even if our role isn't a formal role in terms of being a part of the command team in that situation, I think one of the things we uncovered in 2020 is that as leaders of the city, it'd be really good to know how we stay informed as well as help. I think to the point that Councilmember Stewart made. So anyway, I've, I've just been thinking through it, just since 2020, on how we can do it better. You know, should something like that happen again? Because I think there was so much, we did have challenges with communication, and I'd love to see it be better. And in a non-emergency time, like, really talk it through and envision it, what it looks like to lead together in those moments.
Absolutely. I think that the intent for us is to stretch and bend this plan in an attempt to break it. And I don't mean that in a bad way, but we need to find those blind spots and make improvements upon it. And only we're gonna be able to do that is come together and exercise this plan. So I welcome that, and so your points are well received. And I think that I speak on behalf of Lisa Onette as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, and I just wanted to add to that real quick, too. Oh, sorry, that is still on. That reviewing this, it is a very high-level document, and I would love to have those conversations because there may be a need for an annex to it or a more specific plan that comes out from the conversations that we have that we could definitely address.
Thank you. So I, I had kind of a couple of issues that I wanted to bring up. I'm very much concerned about telecommunication failures, like a, like an EMP situation. I didn't really see that addressed in the, in the document, although if you search for EMP, you get, because employee and all, it's a part of all that. So it's, it's almost impossible to tell for sure that, but I look for a pulse and there's, so I'm, I'm concerned that we, we don't really have a backup plan for, yeah, what if, what if we literally can't reach each other via, via phone or even, you know, Teams or whatever? Electronic communication is completely dead. What is the, you know, what's the default first step, I guess, to, to get in, in touch? And obviously, that means physically somehow getting in touch. So if, for, God forbid, we had an EMP where we, and it's possible that it could be regional and not nationwide. You know, what, I, I think we need to have a, like, this is what we do. If you can't reach anybody, this is the first step. And then we at least have a basis for moving forward, because if nobody knows what the first step is, you can't take step two until you've taken step one. So, so I'm very much concerned about that. And I, I didn't seem to see anything, and we used to have a radio station in Redmond that we just, it kind of looped on, you know, an audio thing that was updated by, by chip and, you know, different news in, in, in the community. But I don't think we've maintained that, and I'm just curious what happened to it. So it was 1580, and I don't know what we did with it. And along those lines, so I, I saw that, you know, you're, you're talking very much about ARES and getting amateur radio involved in, you know, kind of a backup communications scenario. However, an EMP completely messes that up unless they were protected before the EMP. So unless the devices that they're using were, were protected. So, and that's another kind of thing. Are, do we have a plan for protecting at least some of our infrastructure from EMP? You know, things that we have can be hardened, so I, I don't know if we have, if we have plans for that, but I would be curious about that.
Yeah, great questions, Councilmembers. So certainly there are redundant systems built into our response. Something as, such as an EMP would definitely be devastating to us. So we trickle down from having open communications systems to maybe non-verbal by way of texting. If that's knocked out, certainly, you know, it's not beyond me to go out there and get a courier pigeon. But we would move documents around and, you know, our communications would be hampered, but it would certainly, we certainly have ways of communicating nonetheless. There are also, and you'll have to help me out if they're mules or cows, but communication vehicles that we would call on regionally to come here and find a high point and shoot a signal across the city in the event of an EMP attack to reestablish our communications. But no, you went straight for the juggler on that one. That's a difficult one for us.
It is, it's for every community, I think it's a, and if you don't plan, you, you just, you're, you're gonna be just wondering what to do. There's, there's not gonna be, in, in some estimates, there's no recovery from that because if the machines that built the machines that you're using weren't protected, then you're, I mean, you have to basically develop it all from scratch again, which is not a promising, I mean, typically, these, these are going, they're not gonna be nationwide, they're, they're gonna be regional, but that region is gonna be absolutely devastated for maybe a decade until, you know, the resources can be, can be mustered. So anyway, it's, it's, it's very much of concern to me considering some of the more recent events.
Well, I, and I, I think your questions are very timely. One of the things that we've instructed the Emergency Management Office to do was to get with our ARES volunteers and find out what their needs are as far as hardware. And so what that hardware may be, the hardening of that hardware that they have, to make sure that we're more, more robust during times of emergency, so.
Right, well, it's a matter of, like, where do you store it when it's not in use? And because if it's stored in a place that's protected, then, like, once the EMP has passed, then you can utilize it, but you have to have it protected in the first place. So it's, it's very much a, it's a very odd kind of thing to plan for, but it's, I, I can see it. can see it paying, you know, either, either it, we're devastated or we can recover. I mean, it's, it's a really daunting prospect, so I, and I don't know if you've read a bunch about it, but it's not, does not sound like a fun topic. So, anyway, so that's my, that's kind of a few of my concerns. So I would be curious about the radio station, too, because, do we, do we know what happened with that?
Yes, it, well, it got unplugged.
Oh, okay.
During the pandemic. It was moved and unplugged, so we are working to restore it, because some of the, the equipment didn't turn back on. So we've been working with the Ares team and our T I S team, too.
Okay.
Figure out what we need to get that going. Because even if there's a small number of people, I know that having AM radio stations among emergency managers has been highly discussed. There have been moves in the federal government to ask for car manufacturers not to remove them. Because many of the electric cars have removed them, and there's debate, because many say that the signal still can get through to it. So that's a very, very hot topic. But we are, bottom line, yes, we are working to get that, that up and running, because even if it only reaches a small area, it's very important. And some of the, the answers to the questions, they won't necessarily be in this plan, but we also have the emergency support functions with communications. And there's also a more detailed checklist with that. But that, but the EMP might be something that we look at for our hazard, hazard-specific plan as well.
Right.
Steps we could take, because maybe identifying areas, we could put up boards, like they do during fires, of evacuation zone, something like that, that people can, can refer to for more information if, if absolutely every.
Other, other method is, is, yeah, booched, yeah. Great, thank you. Yeah, so I, I mean, it's a big document. I skimmed it, but I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's a starting point, and I'm, I'm excited that we're really in earnest kind of getting after this. I think the pandemic was a, a different kind of thing that we were not, we certainly know, I don't think anybody was really prepared for it, but it's not the kind of disaster that, that municipalities were prepared for. I mean, it just was really not something I think people, I mean, we, we're thinking natural disasters, you know, a volcano or an earthquake or, or a flood or something. But, so it was, it was kind of this other, other kind of thing, so. Great, I see no other questions from council. Mr. Fields? Oh, yes, you did have another question. Go ahead.
So a lot of what I was going to ask was discussed. I'm going to just voice my opinion also about the communication. You have seven council members. We do, in fact, go through an election process, so a lot of people know our names, and we all have ties to some parts of the community. So I think that is a resource from a communication standpoint that is valuable. I think that we had some pretty significant misses in the beginning of the pandemic. And the last point I want to make, I really appreciate that, that your offer to, you know, continue to have dialogue and make this plan even better. I'm going to disagree with Mr. Carson and everybody else who said this. Nobody expected a pandemic. That's just not true. We should have been expecting a pandemic, because I actually worked at King County on emergency planning that included a pandemic, and there were plans at the federal level. So, and the reason I bring that up is because it drove me absolutely nuts every time I heard that, at the federal, at the state, at the city, at the county level. Who would have expected it? We should be expecting it. We should be, that's the point of an emergency management plan, is you expect the worst. Otherwise, you have my granddaughter saying we're all going to die. So my point being, keeping this plan alive and that, and that when and if, not if, but when that day comes, and it will mathematically, it will happen, that we are prepared to immediately bring that plan into implementation and include all of us, and, and that we don't scurry for the dark rooms to figure it out. I, I think it's really important.
Oh, absolutely. And one of the qualifications when we were hired as emergency managers, that they be a pessimist, as they assume the worst, and so Lisa met that.
Thank you. So, so I'm, I'm still kind of unclear on, does council need to approve this, this plan? I mean, typically, we approve our plans so that it's on the record that this is the plan of record, right? This is, so, but, but is there any, there's no other reason that we need to, to approve it, other than?
No vote. You received it, you can accept it, approve it, but you don't need to take a vote on it.
Right, but so it says it's going to be on the, on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I believe that procedurally that was incorrect.
Okay, so we may not see it then. So one thing I, I would suggest, and I, I'd look for my colleagues' opinion on this, but is to have a staff report about the plan being, you know, the draft form. And, and what kind of input have we taken from the community generally on it yet? Have we, have we done much in the way of outreach?
No, no. Due to the time constraints of needing to get the approval, it's gone to the, was it the Emergency Preparedness Council within the city?
So that's like, that's like Director's Team, okay. Well, anyway, so when does it need to be signed off by the mayor to be for, for the state? Because, so we're required to have this, this plan.
Right, right. So it has been signed off, just wanted to present it.
Okay, okay. So, so this is really informational. Yeah, Councilmember Forsyth, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused.
Yeah, so you said, due to the timeline and needing to get approval, approval from whom?
To get it to the state for their requirements.
From, from the mayor?
Okay.
Yeah.
But signed off by the mayor is what?
Right, so that's been done.
Okay.
Previously, before I presented it to the mayor, it had gone through.
So now it goes to the state for state approval?
The state has already approved it contingent on her approval, so, yeah, it's, it has already been reviewed by them.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, one concluding thought maybe on this topic would be, there's obviously a lot of enthusiasm for this topic, and we are always interested in more community engagement and how that looks. That is probably a little bit more granular than what's in these pages here. So it's almost like, I very much second the, the suggestion from the chair and the other council members to, let's keep the conversation going and, and find more opportunities to work together on this. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. So, and I would, I would really love for us to have a, a first step if communication goes south, goes awry, whatever, for how council connects with, with, you know, mayor and Director's Team, E O C, whatever, whatever that first step needs to be if we can't, you know, electronic communications are shot and we, we have to let it physically go somewhere. Where is that? What, what would be the timing of it? At least get that kind of process outlined. Maybe it's a three-step, you know, this is what we do, and we, we, sometimes it's wait and see if some parts of it can be, can be resurrected and, and get working again. So it's not like we have, we have an attack and, and we immediately just drive there. But what would be the timing? Kind of the particulars about how that would go, I think, is, is important, just because, just like, I mean, I, I don't think that it was that people had, didn't have plans for pandemics. I think they just thought it was just unlikely to happen, and so they weren't as detailed as they probably should have been, right? I mean, so, anyway, I just want, I just want us to be able to, like, if, if this happens, we, we know what to do. Because right now, we don't know what to do as elected officials, so.
And I agree with you, and I think that's, comes from sitting down and individually going through the plan, asking the very questions that you're asking. I would say that it's our intention, and certainly my belief, that in the unfortunate event, there is a disaster that you would be pulled in almost immediately. You've been elected to be a representative of the community and also to feed information back out to the community. And so we do have a plan that incorporates that and you, to make sure that information is disseminated through our elected officials.
Great. Well, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity to, to talk about this. It's something that's near and dear to my heart as I, I'm on the, the King County Emergency Management Commission, Committee. So, anyway, that is the end of our agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Thank you for your time and, and for the plan. I'm looking forward to going through it. So I'll, I'll be reaching out. Oh, Councilmember Forsyth?
Just a reminder that next, the next week's meetings will be on Wednesday.
Correct. Very good. All right, with that, with no other business, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.